Evening, good evening. Welcome to Midwest City Council Meeting, the March 9th version. Thank you for being here. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. We do have, as Mr. Sullivan makes his way down to the podium, we have a couple of guests with us tonight. We've got Cadet Striegel. She's a senior at Carl Albert High School. She plans to go into the military when she graduates. Thank you for your future service. And Cadet Rogner, he is a junior at Carl Albert High School and plans, is making his plans to go to West Point. So, thank you for your future service. And they will be leading us in our pledge of allegiance, so will you please stand for the invocation?
I don't know if I'm smart enough to do this before they get up here. Would you bow with me, please? Gracious Lord, we thank you so much for this beautiful day. We enjoyed today, Lord, and we just thank you for the occasion of this council meeting and these men and women and their service to this city. Bless them in their decisions and give them peace in those decisions tonight, Lord. We thank you so much for this great, great community that we enjoy living and working and raising our families in, and we thank you for that blessing, the men and women who serve it so diligently and so faithfully. We thank you so much for this great state and this great nation. We are a blessed people. Father, we take that for granted. We take for granted those who are willing to sacrifice and serve and protect our freedoms every day, and we give you glory and honor for them as well. Father, we just, we just want to ask your blessing on the rest of the activities of this evening. We thank you for your Son Jesus and the blood that's shed on the cross for our sins, and it's in His name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. Okay, we have some awards to give out tonight, well-deserved awards. There's a representative from Oklahoma Municipal League supposed to be here, and I don't see him yet, so myself and the city manager will handle this, so...
May I ask you, want to do the announcement part or do you just...
No, we'll go ahead and get this out of the way. I'm already committed. She pulls me back right in the middle of it. Can you hear me now? Okay. These service awards are given out by the Oklahoma Municipal League to employees or committee members that have served our city for 25 years. You know, our employees, I've said it a million times since I've been in office, our employees are our best asset in the city. Throughout all this, you know, everything that's been thrown at us this last year, the ice storm, COVID, another ice storm, and they're out there every day, doing what they're asked to do without very little complaint. Throughout COVID, they've been moved around to different areas that they're not familiar with, to do jobs they're not familiar with. And then our committee members. The committee members, we've got 17 different committees and commissions that we seat here in Midwest City, and these are volunteers. They, they give up their time to come and serve the city in various capacities, and some of them are very, most of them are very important to the operation, overall operation of the city. And so, when we get a chance to get up and thank these folks for their service, it's a, it's a great opportunity. So, with that being said, Mr. Anderson, would you come down? Now, Mike Anderson, among other things, operates the Mid-Dell Food Pantry, and he also sits on several of our commissioning boards, and Mike's just been a pillar to our community over how many years, Mike? Forever? And, but, his service to this city is gratefully appreciated. And Mike, I'll, I'll just read this to you. Oklahoma Municipal League has entered, entered in its honored role of service, the name of Mike Anderson, in recognition of a quarter century of service to the city of Midwest City, and signed by the OML president and the executive director. You want to get a party pick here? Yeah. Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And this one, I've known for a long time, Kami. Kami works in our neighborhood initiative division. She's been a neighborhood coordinator, and then she lost her mind and transferred over to code enforcement. She's gone from the most liked person in the city to, I'm not going to say the most hated, but pretty close. Kami, Kami's worked for us for 25 years. She's a great employee, always there, and, and supports her other employees and people around her. And again, Kami, your service to the city is greatly appreciated, and, and we can't do it without you, okay? So, I'm not going to read this, but it says the same thing, so... Mr. Milburn serves on several of our committees and again, has been a pillar to our community for a long time, and once again, all of his service is volunteered to come up here and help us, and he never, he never, he always wants to be reappointed to the position. He never turns down that opportunity, so in behalf of everybody here, thank you for your service to our city. Then, the legend in his own mind, Mr. William Pascoe, come on down, buddy. Again, Bill serves as one of our code enforcement officers. He's been here for 25 years. Farley complains, at least, at least to me, anyway, but, but he's a stellar employee, and we're glad to have him. And Bill, thank you for your service to our community, and if you can get some right between us here. Steve Simonsen, Lieutenant Steve Simonsen. I was a lieutenant when he hired on, and, and again, Steve has served our community. He got out of the Air Force here, served there in the Air Force, how many years? Eight. He was in the Air Force for eight years and worked in AWACS, and then decided to become a cop here in Midwest City, and we're grateful for his service, not only to our country, but our community. And again, Steve, 25 years, it's hard to believe. Good Lord. Once again, Pete Singleton has served this community, and how many different departments have you worked in?
Well, it's, which ones are left to accept me in? Four.
Four. Four different divisions within the city. Again, a stellar employee, comes to work every day, never complains. Somebody laughed. And, and we're lucky to have folks like Kami and Bill and Steve and all of them working for us, and Pete, thank you for your service to our community. And that ends our award ceremony. It never hurts to change things up a little bit. Mr. Lyon, community-related announcement.
So, let me start with, we received our sales tax check last night and verified it all this morning because I almost thought it was too good to be true, but, which is a good sign, so we're very thankful to our citizens of Midwest City and eastern Oklahoma County who continues to shop locally here, that supports this city and the organization, and our police and fire for which our sales tax funds, funds all of this. But for the month of March, our sales tax was up 20.49%.
Well, projections are year-over-year.
That's, that's year-over-year, so, yeah, versus previous year, we're up, and with some adjustments, 635,000, oh, one oh, 20.56%, and that's sales and use tax. Our use tax was up 17%. Our sales tax was up 132,000. And then versus projection, which is what we base our budget on, we were up 919,752 over our projection for the month, or 32.8%. So, what can you say? That is for the half, half of January and the first half of February, sales tax collection, so. Other municipalities I look at, all were year-over-year higher than previous year, but we were certainly one of the highest, so the only one that was down, I guess, of the cities we looked at was Oklahoma City, was down a little bit. Everyone else in eastern Oklahoma County was up at least 5%. So, very good report, which leads me into announcing, or to a welcome to our finance, new finance director. Stand up. That's Tia Tia Cromer, Cromar, I get it right. Tia Tia Cromar, Tia twice. Glad to have Tia here. Tia's worked many years in both accounting and administration, cultivating, creating positive work environment and team environment. He's worked for several companies. He has a Bachelor of Science in Corporate Finance and his Master of Public Accountancy. He began his career working in hospital administration, including, he worked at Midwest Regional at one point as a COO with, as we said, finance and, and operations management. So, he is bringing his family here with his, his wife Brittany and their five children into our community, so we're excited to have Tia with us. Josh Ryan, who was just taking pictures, you were wondering who this guy was. Josh is, he is our newest member. He's on his second day here. Tia is seven days, right?
Yes.
It's your seventh day. Lucky number seven. So, Josh has worked in city government communication for close to 20 years. He worked for the city of Oklahoma City, so we're, we are glad to have him. He recently worked at the, at the airport for the authority out there as their communications and media specialist. So, he's worked with marketing and emergency communications, done digital media production. He has a Bachelor of Science in Mass Communication from East Central down in Ada, and he's locally involved with the Midwest City community as a Cub Master of PAC-210 and as a volunteer coach for baseball in YMCA volleyball. Josh and his family live close to Midwest City. They've lived here for 17 years and consider it to be their home base. His wife and man, and two sons, both are attending Mid-Dell Schools, so welcome Josh. Next community announcement is the Friends of the, of the Shelter Foundation will be hosting a drive-through microchip clinic at the Midwest City Animal Shelter on Saturday, March 20th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Cost is $25 per pet, includes lifetime registration. For more information, you can get on our website at MidwestCityOK.org. It's a great program. Something I wanted to announce, I've talked to many of you on council, but wanted to publicly announce this to make sure everyone knows what we're doing with code enforcement and solid waste. They continue to work together jointly in, in our continued evolution of picking up all the storm debris and starting to work code enforcement back into the process for, for those that have not cleaned up. So, code enforcement is working with solid waste to help customers dispose of their ice storm through the quarterly bulk waste service. On Monday, March 1st, we started, code enforcement started working brush and debris in the areas of Midwest City that were scheduled to be picked up on the quarterly bulk waste master 14-day calendar. This allows customers to place their ice storm debris, such as broken limbs, and at the curb before our solid waste crews are in the area for quarterly bulk waste service. Residents will have to follow the guidelines, with one exception, there is, we have not created a limit on the green waste that can be placed on the curb, which, you know, now we have, how many yard, Paul? Two or four?
Four, generally, four.
Generally, it's four. We're going to waive that so we can encourage those that haven't cleaned up to get that debris out there, and, and we'll pick it up as, as a coordinated effort, so. Think this is a good program. This was the brainchild of Mr. Streets and Mr. Stroh, two department heads working together, came up with this idea and recommended to management, and we thought it was a great idea, and we'll see how it works out. I think it'll be effective, so. I think that's all I have. I do want to, as we get into the agenda, I think I'll do this now, so Jill, would you stand up? Jill Donaldson, all the way in the back. Jill Donaldson, my executive assistant. She, I, I want to recognize her for the work she's done on coordinating and getting this on the, on the agenda tonight. This is all the work, the final work of the SSM contract and all the work with CHS, and, and there was, she put a lot of work into getting all this on the agenda tonight and getting it timely because SSM wanted to get this done now, and she made it happen, so I just want to thank Jill Donaldson.
Ms. Hayes, do you have anything for the council?
I do. First off, yesterday was International Women's Day, and I noticed that our police department recognized female officers and gave special attention to them, and if there was a different announcement for full-city employees, I'd missed it, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of the hard-working women that we have, as the mayor was referencing earlier when giving out the 25-year service awards. All of our folks work really, really hard, and so I just wanted to give a special acknowledgement in that regard. Also, a couple of events that are coming up. There is a free laundry, up to $10 of free laundry, free lunch, free pet food, free books, new socks, community event happening Saturday, March 27th, 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and you can call to schedule appointments to the Love Our Laundry location at 4337 Southeast 15th Street in Dell City, but that is welcoming Midwest City folks also. Midwest City High School is kicking off its Heart of Gold Charity Week, and they seem to be spreading it out a little more this year. If you're so inclined, tomorrow night, starting at 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., 15% of your purchase at S&amp;B Burgers will go towards the Heart of Gold Week at the high school, so, I mean, and who can resist an S&amp;B Burger, let's be honest. Likewise, they are going to have their first annual cornhole tournament, Sunday, March 21st, 11:00 a.m. is registration, 12:00 p.m. to start. Each team is $50. Again, all of the proceeds go towards the Heart of Gold Week, and you can sign up at that event, or you can register in advance by contacting Ms. Gorman at Midwest City High School about that. So, they, they raise a lot of money every year to honor one particular recipient who has, you know, suffered significantly with health issues or other issues type of thing, and so if you're so inclined, please consider that. I also wanted to tag on to what the city manager had offered in terms of, I saw that, first off, the pool is hiring for jobs, and they're also selling passes. Pool passes have started at, I believe it's $35 for those. Those are on sale. And then, mark your calendars, Art Fest, covered in color, May 8th, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Charles Johnson Park there in Sooner Town Center, and looking forward to up to 40 local artists, a sidewalk competition, demonstrations, live music, and much more. And last but not least, I was asked to make an announcement about it's Girl Scout Cookie Time. So, we have a troop here in Midwest City who has got a goal set, and I have some contact information for the, the troop leader, if anybody is so inclined and wanting some Girl Scout cookies. Candidly, Rilla Johnson and I fell victim driving through the neighborhood from the grocery store, and she was unloading the back of her SUV. I can vouch for the quality of the cookies this year personally, and it's about $5 a box, so if you're so inclined, it's Girl Scout cook time. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Does anyone else have anything for the order? Just a couple of things. I want to back stuff with Mr. Lyon was saying about code enforcement. They've worked really hard, working with everybody, trying to get things picked up. Now they're going to get back into action, so for you citizens that are watching and everybody else, please have patience with them. They will work with you if you've got issues, but just give them a break, will you please? Another announcement, as you know, we had to cancel our Veteran's Day Parade this year, and the Veteran's Day Parade was going to be recognizing our Vietnam veterans. 2020 was the 45th anniversary of our pullout of Saigon, and the last person left Vietnam. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have those two events that were scheduled for there, but March 29th is actually Vietnam Veterans Day, and if you know a Vietnam veteran, please thank them for their service. They didn't get thanked, and I want to take this time to recognize one of our own, Pat Byrne, who served in the United States Air Force in Thailand during the Vietnam era, and Pat, thank you for your service during that time period. If there's nothing else, we will go into our dissent agenda, or dissent agenda, or these items are placed on dissent agenda with the council by unanimous consent, confirmed through to the agenda items by one motion. If any item does not, or proposed item does not meet with the approval of council or members of the audience, wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard and rated for. That being said, Chair entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate a standing on.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carried. We have three discussion items on this agenda. Mr. Lyon, item number one.
Discussion and consideration of approval to authorize the Memorial Hospital Authority, Authority to execute the lease termination agreement between the Authority and Midwest Regional Medical Center, LLC, Health Management Associates, LLC, and CHS, Community Health Systems, Inc., authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement evidencing such approval and authorizing to the mayor and city clerk to sign all other documents prudent and/or necessary to close this transaction.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've been, kept apprised of this situation for the last 18 months. This is a historic event for our community, and with that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I have a couple of things that I'd like to say real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
This has been a long 18 months on this project. Matt and I were, the mayor and I were involved in this a little on the periphery because we're both on the hospital board, which is going away, which is not a bad thing. I wanted to say, with all the hard work that Tim and Vaughn and his executive staff have done, Robert Coleman, nobody knows how close this came at times, how difficult of a time it was for Tim and his staff, and he basically closed the deal on a long trip driving out to the Panhandle to go hunting with his kids. He took some time away from that to make sure that this thing didn't fall apart. Our staff did a wonderful job, and I just want to say thank you to everybody that's involved in this. This is one of the, this is the biggest thing that we will ever go on.
I just wanted to verify so we're comfortable that we don't have any outstanding amounts owed by our outgoing folks, and we're, we're good to close and walk away.
That's a good question. No, there's no outstanding amounts. I've verified that. Everything's been paid up to date, and so, starting April, things like us dispatching by ambulance service will be billed now to SSM, but all the, in lieu of monies and any penalties for CMS performance have all been paid. And so this is, just for explanation purposes for the public, this is the cancellation document, so we're canceling the contract as of, let's see, March 31st at 11:59 p.m. we will cancel the contract, and then the new contract, if approved, will start at midnight. There, and legally, this has to occur before we can enter into a contract with CHS.
It's my honor then to suggest that we pass this and make a motion. I wanted to be the one that made this motion, was this Amal Warden, too? I want to get rid of this company out of Tennessee. So, I'm very happy to say I make a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, indicate a standing on. Opposed? Extinction? Motion does carry. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration of approval to authorize the Midwest, the Memorial Hospital Authority to execute the sublease and lease agreement between the Authority and SSM Healthcare of Oklahoma, Inc., authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement evidencing such approval and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign all other documents prudent and/or necessary to close this transaction.
I don't think there's any discussion needed. Chair entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate a standing on.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion carried. I will say that all three, all four of these judges have done us a very good job and continue to do so. We're lucky to have this, this group of individuals.
Vicki, you have anything to say on that? You work with them every day.
All of them, fantastic. I highly recommend.
I think we've used Farley one time as an alternate. We got in a bind and had to use him. He's, he fills in more as the prosecutor when we need a help on prosecuting, but...
And not just that, but I would just say too, you know...
He's a professor at Rose State.
How many committees do we have that people can serve on? I don't know. I'm fine with it, but I thought it was reasonable he didn't get appointed to something a couple of years ago he wasn't a Midwest City resident.
I don't recall that being an issue. He did apply for the city attorney's job. But.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries. I will say that all three, all four of these judges have done us a very good job and continue to do so. We're lucky to have this group of individuals.
Vicki, you have anything to say on that? You work with them every day.
All of them fantastic. I would recommend.
I think we've used Farley one time as an alternate. We got in a bind and had to use him. He fills in more as the prosecutor when we need a help on prosecuting.
And not just that, but I would just say to, you know, several of these gentlemen in particular are dedicated servants to our community in Midwest City. And not just in their service to the judiciary here, but, I mean, just to the overall benefits of our community and day-to-day, so.
Very much so.
Well, they all embrace our values and that's a plus. So yes, thank you for that. Ladies and gentlemen, move into new business public discussion of our agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before council? Hearing none, the executive session.
Ma'am.
Could you come down, ma'am?
That's John Williams. No.
Okay.
I don't know what happened to everyone now.
Could you state your name and address for the.
My name is Sheila Williams and my address is 321 Cedar Bend Drive, Midwest City, Oklahoma, 73130.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm nervous, I don't know what to do. I wanted to, my name is Sheila Williamson. I am the owner and director of Grown, but not on my own, Life Skills. And I wanted to be the voice for the kids out here in Midwest City. I've been an advocate for kids for over 20 years and I teach life skills to kids in the Midwest City community. And I was seeking a place to be able to house the kids for the summer. I am concerned for the safety and I just wanted to come forth and just get my voice out here to let it be known that I am in search of a, I have a center here in Midwest City, but I'm looking for a larger place to expand. So I don't know where else to go. So if you all know of any places or anything or any kids that would be interested in taking our life skills, it's a free service that we do offer. We also give personal hygiene items out to kids that are in need. I'm a person that's show and tell, I'm not sure if I'm allowed, but I bought all kinds of goodies here to give you a reminder on how life skills, how much life skills is needed for the kids. And I also enclosed a lot of my information as well, my emails, my, all of my contact information. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to hand this out to you guys or not, but I would love for you guys to be able to just take a sample.
So unfortunately, we can't, we can't address you because it's under new business.
Right.
But I'm sure somebody here could get her with the right people to talk to.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. And if I'm allowed to just hand this out to you guys, it's just a free sample of what it is. You have any kiddos that may have any use of any of these things, they don't know what it is, feel free to just educate them what it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, ma'am.
Ma'am, I want to tell you, I talked with Heather and she is the one, this is the lady she's been speaking of, Sheila with basic life skills for the children here and.
We talked before.
Right, right.
Again, thank you for being here, ma'am. We appreciate it, we truly do.
Thank you, appreciate you. Thank you for.
I'll let you all pick what they're all different.
All right. Thank you, Sheila. Nice seeing you again. She's a good person.
Does anyone else have anything to bring before the council? We do have an executive session with this, but it's no longer needed. And if there's no other business to be brought before the council, we are here by the chair. I follow orders, the Midwest City Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agendas of trustees by unanimous consent, approved through two agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wishing to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard and right in order. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries. We do have one discussion moment.
We do not need that discussion. Well, we'll have addendum, so discussion item one, no action needed.
No action needed for discussion item number one. Now ladies and gentlemen, move into new business public.
Hang on, hang on, we've got the addendum. Let me read it.
Oh, yeah. You reminded me of that, didn't you? Okay. We do have number two.
Discussion and consideration of, one, to approve and enter into the lease termination agreement between the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority and Midwest Regional Medical Center LLC and Health Management Associates LLC, HMA, and Community Health Systems, CHS. Two, approve and enter into the hospital's sublease and lease agreement between the Authority and SSM Healthcare of Oklahoma, Inc., SSM. Three, approve a resolution that effectuates the lease termination agreement with HMA, CHS, and authorizes a new lease, sublease with SSM. And fourth, authorizing the chairman and secretary to sign all necessary documents evidencing such approval and authorizing the chairman and secretary to sign all other documents prudent and/or necessary to close these transactions.
You have a chair, entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, indicate aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries. Now we can move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Seeing none, we do have a executive session attached to this agenda. Mr. Lyne.
Discussion and consideration of, one, entering into executive session is allowed under 25 OS subsection 307(c)(11) to confer on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to remain or to locate within the city. And two, an open session authorizing the general manager and administrator to take action as appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
Chair, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
A motion and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in executive session. Thank you for being here.
Do what? Yes, thank you.